Good evening. It is Monday, May 8th, 2023, and the time is 6:00 PM. This regular meeting with the Mesquite Independent School District Board of Trustees is called to order. A quorum is present and notice the meeting has been posted for the time and manner required by law. At this time, the board will move into a closed meeting under authority of Texas Government Code Section 551.071 for consultation with the board's attorney and Section 551.074 under personnel. No formal action will be taken in closed meeting and we will return back in here in approximately 30 minutes. The time is now 6:26 PM and the board will now reconvene in open meeting. We'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. We're glad you're here. At this time, we have with us tonight a group of students from Motley Elementary that will lead us in our pledges of allegiance. And we also have Ron Howard, who is the pastor with Mesquite Friendship Church, that will lead our invocation. So if you'd like, at this time, please stand for our invocation and remain standing for the pledges of allegiance.
Sir, if we could just take a moment in silence for the families and the victims in this latest incident in Allen, Texas. So if you could, just let's just offer up a moment of silence. Thank you. Gracious and most heavenly Father, Father, we thank you yet again for the opportunity of this day. As we convene this meeting, Father, we ask right now for your support, your guidance and wisdom during these proceedings. Allow our hearts and minds to be focused on the staff, faculty and students of this great Mesquite Independent School District. We ask right now that you allow us to join together, Father, in the decisions that we make. Father, be decisions that you author, Father. Allow things to be done decently and in order. Father God, we ask that you continually join us together, bind us so close together that one may not fall without the other. We thank you yet again for your grace, your everlasting mercy, your comforting care. These are the blessings we pray in our darling son Jesus' name. Amen.
Dr. Delamar, if you'd like to introduce your students or if they want to introduce themselves?
Hello, my name is Damian Chavez and I'm in kindergarten.
All right. Good job.
I'm Eli Fawcett. I'm in second grade.
I am Megan Fawcett and I'm in second grade.
I'm Angelique Godinez and I'm in second grade.
I'm Sebastian Godinez and I'm in fifth grade.
I'm Samantha Louise and I'm in fourth grade.
I'm Sophia Roy and I'm in kindergarten.
I'm Erin Ariaga and I'm in kindergarten.
My name is Abraham Ariaga and I am in third grade.
Okay. Thank you all very much for being here. Mr. Howard, we appreciate your invocation as well. Next item on the agenda is our board and PTA moment. Do we have anyone here from the PTA this evening? Okay, good.
Good evening. I'm Emily Buchanan, your Mesquite ISD Council of PTAs president for the 2223 school year. I will be giving you our council report tonight, kind of our overall of what's happened throughout the year, kind of. So Mesquite ISD Council of PTAs is in good standing. We currently have 5,178 members for our school district. Out of 49 schools, we have two that's inactive, eight active and 39 in good standing. Council has assisted local PTAs throughout the year by helping with elections, hold trainings, doing one-on-one trainings, as well as showing up to campuses to assist when asked. Overall, as a rebuilding year, I have seen it as being a success. We have made the connections with our locals that wasn't there previously. The training that wasn't there previously is there now and it's just we're being very supportive to all of our locals. If any parents are interested in being on the executive board at your local campus or just joining PTA and being a volunteer with us, reach out to your school's principal and they will be able to get you in contact with the right person. Thank you so much for all you do and have a great summer.
Thank you very much. At this time, Mr. Seward and Mr. Carbo have a few things they're going to brief us on and anybody else that wants to chime in as well. Robert, go ahead.
Before we start that, Kevin, I got one more group first. I'd like to invite board members, some students from Potteet to talk about an opportunity for our students, if they would come forward and give their quick little presentation.
Good evening. My name is Jonathan Chitty and I'm the executive director of Keep Mesquite Beautiful. This evening, we have a couple of students in our Youth Environmental Leaders Program. So Keep Mesquite Beautiful has been around for 35 years this year and we really appreciate the opportunity to partner with Mesquite Independent School District. And through these partnerships, we have a variety of programs and initiatives that keep our students busy and gives them opportunities. And we're going to talk about that a little bit more today. But I appreciate your time and we couldn't do our programs without members like Claudia Ryan, Maxie Taylor and Dr. Terry White that help us coordinate our efforts and expand our outreach for this program. So thank you for allowing us the opportunity to showcase some of our youth environmental leaders and to highlight our program this evening.
Thank you, Jonathan. I am Maxie Taylor and it is my pleasure to serve as one of the coordinators for this program. I am thrilled to announce that next year we will be expanding to include ninth through 12th graders. So it was formerly just juniors and seniors. This means that any high school student in the Mesquite ISD with a passion for environment and their community now have the opportunity to earn volunteer hours, receive recommendation letters, scholarship opportunities, and they get to work hand in hand with Keep Mesquite Beautiful. Our Yale students are different makers and we are so proud of them. One of our amazing student leaders is Mr. Diego.
Thank you, Maxie. I'm Diego Meligan and I'm a senior at Potteet High School. I am president also of Youth Environmental Leaders and it's been an honor to serve with my fellow members in promoting sustainability and environmental consciousness in our community here in Mesquite. Our mission is to impact the community by teaching sustainability, motivate citizens to participate in volunteer activities and educate others to become more environmentally conscious. And the Yale program has given us that platform and I'm very thankful for that. And who's Max?
That's a very good point, Diego. I'm Matthew Maximilian Sanchez. I'm the, or I'm sorry, I'm the historian of Yale, which is Youth Environmental Leaders. And we've done some amazing things this year. We've done trash days, recycle days. And one of my favorite events is when we learned about sustainability that we can utilize in our household environments. We've done some great things. There's some great things to come, so thank you for having us here.
I'm Joanna. I'm the vice president and we are thrilled to be resurrecting this program after the pandemic, but as seniors, we want to ensure that Yale continues to thrive long after we have graduated. That's why we're inviting any high schooler in the Mesquite ISD who has a passion for the planet to get involved.
My name is Abigail. I'm the secretary and by joining Yale, students will have the chance to become a leader and make an impact on their community. So if you love the planet, please come and talk to one of us in the foyer. We'll have flyers with the QR code and you can sign up for more information. Again, we are Keep Mesquite Beautiful with Youth Environmental Leaders and thank you for your time.
We hear lots of good things regarding Keep Mesquite Beautiful. And Jonathan, thank you for your leadership as well. Maxie, thank you too. Kevin?
That was really good and I'm really proud of KMB. I was part of that many years ago and I've seen it evolve now and under Jonathan, you're leading in good direction. Thank you very much. We have a couple of things we wanted to talk about. Of course, we've been to Austin four or five times already with the legislature going on strong, but we've been over there fighting over certain issues like the basic allotment, which is the funds that we get from Austin. Austin, as some of you know, many years ago, they offered to support the school districts. They were going to pay their share, which was 40%, which today they're only paying about 17%. So that's why we have to go to Austin so much and try to remind them of what's going on. We don't see a lot of light at the end of that tunnel, but we're going to continue fighting on that. We've had visits talking to our legislators about teacher raises and the programs that we have here. We also talked about retired teachers, that they're talking about the COLA, which is the cost of living adjustment. So that was there. We had a chance to go with our teacher association, the MEA, and participate with ATP, which is the association at the state level. And the other thing we had conversations about was they're talking about vouchers of being a form to create parental choice where we know parents, we have the choice. As a parent, I have a choice where I could send my kids to school. Vouchers is not deciding where I take them or not take them. But those are other conversations that have to be had. The important thing is there are a lot of things that we could do. I keep telling, reminding parents, call your legislators. We have a lot of help in Austin, a lot of legislators. They truly believe in education, so they need to know that we're behind them, we're supporting their decisions. But that education is very important because that's what's going to educate our kids and educated citizens is what makes your country go in progress. So with that said, I know you have some other things.
Well, I was just going to say, board members, you've been there and we've had administrators, teachers down there. I'm very proud that everybody's been going down this year and talking with our legislators in person as well as on the phone and emails. And we want to continue that. And some of you have been getting alerts that we sent out have been very, very, very beneficial. In fact, one count came back just in one day from one organization, over 9,000 people had responded regarding some of the bills that concern us in public education. As he talked about, we're down there talking about increased funding, which is on the basic allotment and some other areas. It's very important, the amount of money they're putting into the school system or they're talking about is still not enough. They're going to put in, if you add everything up right now, if it does pass, it's going to be about $7 billion. That's not a lot because that's over two years. What we're pushing for is it should be $14 billion to try to meet inflation since 2019. In fact, we had a May Day, May Day, May Day event in Dallas last week that was done in five different cities throughout the state to send the message. We had our superintendent, our staff were there and board members, and it was all over the news. We're trying to put the pressure on and we're going to keep the pressure on because they're in the middle of conference committee on the budget itself. And there's five members from the Senate, five from the House. So they can amend some things that'll have to go back for votes. So we're trying to keep the pressure on for more funding. We're against vouchers because there's no accountability and no transparency with that. And we want more increased funding for school safety as well as local control, flexibility at the local level. So again, very proud of our board members, our staff, our teachers that have been down there visiting with our legislators. They do hear us and they want us there. So we're trying to push for funding for our students in this district to do what we need to do. Thank you, Mr. President. The state's budget surplus for, the budgeting for the next two years is $33 billion. I had one more thing outside that, Mr. President.
I don't know, Dr. Reeder, do you want to add something?
Go ahead.
Robert has said?
No, mine's a separate deal. Go ahead. Okay. This week, and I think from this board, is Teacher Appreciation Week. And I think we need to recognize as a board and as a district to thank each and every one of our teachers in this district for the job they do. They go above and beyond. So with that, I hope that if you see a teacher, an educator in our district over the next week, be sure to reach out, thank them for what they're doing because they care about your students and all of our students, to give them what they need. And our students, I hope that you're listening, thank a teacher because in the long, after you graduate, you're going to come back and say, those teachers did impact me and helped me learn some things to help make choices. So again, I want to thank all of our teachers in this district.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. So as y'all probably saw from the report from at least two of the trustees, they spend a lot more hours than what you see up in the dais on board meeting nights. And so it's an honor to serve with this board, but tonight's a special night especially for one of our trustees because our board is an awesome board to work with, but is also a tenure board. And tonight, please help, help me, right, celebrate 30 years on this board to Mr. Robert Seward.
Now I'm starting to feel old.
30 years of wisdom, right? Back to you, Mr. President.
Robert would have been up for reelection this Saturday, but because his position was unopposed, he was reelected for another three years. So whether we want him or not, we have him another three years. Congratulations, Bobby. Proud of you. Board, do you have anything else to add? At this time, we'll move into student and staff guests. Ms. Jobe?
Okay. We're going to begin this evening by recognizing one of our staff members. We have a star para of the month every month, but we also have a star para of the year. And tonight, it is my pleasure to recognize Sue Carmen. Is Sue here? Where is Sue? Come on up. Sue is a very special lady who works in our catering services department and she has been with the district for 27 years and we are so proud. She's always smiling, always helpful, always a joy to work with. So we're proud to recognize her tonight. Okay, next we have our valedictorians and salutatorians from our high schools. So we're going to begin with Potteet High School and Principal Kelly Long, if she'll introduce her Val and Sal to us.
Good evening. It is my honor to introduce you to the valedictorian and salutatorian of Potteet High School, two of our very distinguished parts. Right now, you can, he's directing. Ernesto Rodriguez is our valedictorian. Ernesto has been in orchestra for seven years. His college plans, and he's also been a part of National Honor Society. His college plans are to attend UTD to study biology, then he will continue into the medical field. His scholarships is, he received a valedictoria scholarship at UTD. And I'd like to introduce his very proud parents, mom and dad, Sandra and Ramon Rodriguez. Y'all wave, mom and dad. He's very humble too, as you can see, very proud. Our salutatorian is Joanna Revlin. Joanna is the vice president. Y'all have already met her once. She's the vice president of Youth Environmental Leaders. She's also in the National Honor Society, Senior Leaders and in ceramics. She has plans to attend Keep the Family Legacy and attend Texas A&amp;M University and she'll major in environmental engineering. She also has received the Texas A&amp;M Engineering Grant. Her very, very proud parents, they are already A&amp;M parents, are Michaela and Nick Revlin in the back.
And next from John Horn High School, I'd like to introduce Principal Deidre Brown to introduce her Val and Sal.
Good evening. I'm excited to introduce our Val and Sal here at Horn High School. First, we'll start out with our salutatorium, Samuel George. Samuel has attended all four years at John Horn and accomplished his status by concentrating on challenging coursework, being involved with music and academics and prospering in his participation in church. He has been a member of the National Honor Society and Acadaca for one year and has been involved in the orchestra program for two years. Outside of school, Samuel is a member of the Dallas Church of God and is committed to the youth worship team as a guitarist. He attends PYCD, Pentecostal Youth Conference of Dallas, serving as a musical team member. Samuel is recognized as an AP scholar and has an A honor roll and has been placed, and has placed third in the Art Acadaca competition. He will be attending University of Texas in Dallas in the pursuit of a computer science degree to become a software engineer. To attend, he will apply to the top 10 percentage scholarship of a 1,500 per semester for UT and CapEx Scholarship 4,000. Samuel's family is made up of four members, his mother Grace George. A stay-at-home mom, his father Bijou George, a social worker for Metro Care, and her sister Sharon George, who is currently a junior here at Horn. He would also like to acknowledge his grandfather, who is traveling, who was a traveling pastor for the Pentecostal Grace Assembly Church. His family is originally from India and is very proud of Samuel's accomplishments, his diligence and his perseverance in his pursuit to become an engineer. Salutatorian Samuel George. Now I'd like to introduce our valedictorian, Elena Lee. Elena has attended all four years at John Horn and has accomplished her status by undertaking rigorous coursework, being involved in several organizations and volunteering for community service. She's a member of the National German Science, Art and English Honor Societies, as well as being a member of Beta. She has volunteered for several trash bash pickups and was a JAG leader for the Summer Freshman University Transition Week. She has earned AP Student of the Month, been selected a Lighthouse participant two years in a row, and is a Art II D state qualifier. She plans to attend the University of Texas of Austin for the pre-pharmacy degree to become a pharmacist. She received an $875 per semester scholarship and a $900 per year scholarship from UT and also gained a $100 scholarship from the National Student Leadership Sticker Competition. Elena is the only child to Mr. Lee and Mrs. Lee. Her mom, Rosalyn, is a monitor technician for Baylor Medical and her father, Quack Lee, is a scan coordinator for Albertsons. Both of her parents immigrated to the US, her mom from the Philippines and her father from Vietnam. Her family is very proud of her accomplishments and accolades as a student and can't wait to see her succeed in college. Valedictorian Elena Lee.
From Mesquite High School, please welcome Jeff Johnson to talk about his valedictorian and salutatorian.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to introduce our salutatorian, Amanda Carter. While at Mesquite High School, Amanda has taken 12 AP classes, including being an AP scholar with distinction, and three dual credit classes while maintaining her 4.0 GPA. She's also been UIL Journalism Co-Captain, BPA Vice President, Calculus Club Treasurer, Quest Bridge College Prep Scholar and National Finalist, and also a three-time Lighthouse Award recipient. She has also been involved in Acadaca, UIL Math, NHS, Skeeters with a Cause and Senior Leaders. Amanda will attend the University of Texas at Austin in the fall, where she will major in Biology on the pre-dental track. She has received the Dell Scholarships and a Housing Scholarship. She is here tonight with her father, Marcus Carter, and her mother, Limon Carter. Our salutatorian, Amanda Carter. Our valedictorian at Mesquite High School is Mega Joseph. While at MHS, Mega has taken 15 AP classes and was also an AP scholar with honors. She's been co-editor in chief of the school's yearbook staff, participated in UIL Academics, Acadaca, Deca, NHS, Senior Leaders and Battle of the Books. Mega is a Lighthouse Award recipient as well. Mega will attend the University of Texas at Austin in the fall, where she will major in Biochemistry on the pre-med track. She is here tonight with her father, Benny Joseph, her mother, Lolly Mal Joseph, and her brothers, Joffy Joseph and Joss Joseph, watching online. Our valedictorian at Mesquite High School, Mega Joseph.
All right. From North Mesquite High School, please welcome Principal TJ Reed to introduce his Val and Sal.
Good evening. It's my privilege and honor to introduce the salutatorian and valedictorian for North Mesquite High School for the class of 23. We're going to start off with Gloria Bohina, our salutatorian for North Mesquite High School. Gloria has been involved in National Honor Society for three years and is currently serving as vice president. In addition, she has been part of student council for a year and serves as Pride and Patriotism Community Chair. Her college plans, Gloria plans on pursuing a degree in nursing at Texas A&amp;M Commerce in the fall. She has received the Honors College Scholarship at Texas A&amp;M University College, granting her a full ride scholarship. Accompanying her today is Orellia Gonzalez, Martin Bohina, and her siblings Jacque, Jacqueline and Alexandra Bohina and Jacqueline Rodriguez. Gloria Bohina, our salutatorian at North Mesquite High School. Our valedictorian, Leslie Calixto. Leslie has been a member of National Honor Society for three years and is currently serving as the National Honor Society Secretary. She has participated in Science Club, Prom Committee, Student Council and Emerging Leaders throughout her four years at North Mesquite. throughout her four years at North Mesquite. In addition to her service at North Mesquite, she is currently serving as a student member of the School Health Advisory Council for Mesquite I S D. Leslie will be attending Honors College of Texas A and M University at Commerce and will major in the Biological Sciences and Pre-Med Track with a minor in Chemistry. Leslie received several scholarships, including a scholarship and accepted at Emory University through Quest Bridge, received the Dallas Promise Scholarship to the University of North Texas at Dallas, Texas Woman University, and Texas A and M University at Commerce, as well as a full-ride scholarship to the Honors College there. Leslie is accompanied by her parents, Jose and Agustina Calixto, siblings, Yasenia, Jose, Juan, and Myrta Calixto. Leslie Calixto, valedictorian for North Mesquite High School.
And from West Mesquite High School, we have Principal Karen Morris to introduce her Val and Sal.
Good evening. The 2023 salutatorian for West Mesquite High School is Shamaria Smith. She is the daughter of Elvis and Stephanie Smith. During her high school career, she was enrolled in 13 A P courses, will have six dual-credit hours, and is an A P Scholar and A P Capstone Diploma candidate. She is a member of the National Honor Society, Mu Alpha Theta, Emerging Leaders, and Crime Stoppers. Shamaria has completed over 100 volunteer hours and has treasured her time volunteering with young children at Camp Invention Summer STEM Camp over the course of her high school career. She has won the Outstanding Soloist for Flute and has been awarded every year of her high school career in the Visual Arts Scholastic Competition. In the fall, Shamaria will be attending Brown University and majoring in Visual Arts. She has received over $370,000 in academic scholarship offers. We are so very proud of all that she has accomplished. The 2023 valedictorian for West Mesquite High School is Lucas Ranfrans. He is the son of Beata Ranfrans. During his high school career, he has earned 15 dual-credit hours, was enrolled in 15 A P courses, and is an A P Scholar with Distinction. He completed over 140 volunteer hours over the course of his high school education. He is a member of the National Honor Society, Mu Alpha Theta, and Emerging Leaders. He placed first in current events in the U I L District Meet and has served as drum major for the Burnt Orange Band. He participates in the K E O M Student Broadcasting Program, where he conducts a podcast about Supreme Court cases called Supreme Court Brief. In the fall, Lucas will attend Yale University, where he plans to major in Political Science and then pursue law. He has received over $2.6 million in academic scholarship offers. That includes his full ride to Yale. We cannot wait to see what the future holds for this young man.
And now it's my pleasure to welcome M Mesquite N double A C P President, Henry Brown. He has several scholarships to award to Mesquite I S D students this evening.
Good afternoon, everybody. I would like to ask for these kids to come forth if they are here. In fact, I would like to ask some of our board members if they are here to come stand with us on this N double A C P Board member. Kane, Mesquite High School, if this child is here, will you please come to the front? Victor Abiki? All right. Thank God for the mayor making it, Mr. Dan Alderman. North Mesquite student Ebony Williams, will you come to the front? West Mesquite, Myla Taylor, will you come to the front? Potteet High School, Lauren Gamblin, will you come to the front? Right, this is one that I have some problem with. Horn High School, Crystal, come on, Vice President, help me out.
Isadiqua.
Isadiqua. Look like we got them all here, so that's a blessing. Thank the school for working with us to get these kids out here this evening. N double A C P banquet took place about seven months ago, and each one of these kids received an award for their outstanding scholarly, you know, lifestyle and their schooling and stuff like that here. And we just wanted to celebrate them at the banquet. And I told them while I was there, I said, hey, we got something for you. So it's been like six, seven months later, and we're making good on our promise. I think one of them said, yeah, I bet he's just going to give us a trophy. Nah, nah, we just want to honor you. I wish some kind of way these young people can tell us the college that they are going to. I mean, these are some outstanding young people. Is there a loose mic around here where they can? We got a mic right here? Okay, well, come on up to the front and tell us, just like everybody else telling where they going. And I don't forget, y'all told us once before that I don't forget. Will you share with us your name and where you're going to school?
Hi, my name is Myla Taylor, and I will be attending Georgetown University.
Hi, my name is Victory Beckett, and I'm going to be attending the University of Texas at Arlington.
Hi, I'm Ebony Williams, and I'll be going to Howard University.
Hi, my name is Lauren Gamblin, and I'm going to be going to Hudson-Tulsa University on a full-ride academic scholarship.
My name is Crystal Isadiqua, and I'll be going to University of Texas at Austin.
Hey, before y'all go to the seat, can y'all come to the front for a seat? I would like to get the mayor to say something if I could. Mayor, it's a blessing to have these kids.
Absolutely, glad to do it. It is indeed a pleasure to be here tonight, and on behalf of the City Council, we congratulate you. I was invited by Henry Brown to come and to join in the celebration. And just to say, we're very proud of each and every one of you, and we wish you the very best. So again, congratulations to you for receiving these scholarships. God bless you. Thank you, sir.
It's no more than right for the mayor to say something. It's no more than right for the mayor to say something because he was one of our biggest sponsors. You know, we thank God for all of our sponsors that put in on these scholarships. And him, you know, he's spearheaded along with former Mayor Bruce Archer and all of the beautiful businesses in our community. We're just so happy for each one of you for supporting these young people. So now I guess we can go and take a picture.
Next, we would like to celebrate our partnership with Dallas College. And I believe tonight we have Dallas College Trustee Monica Lyra Bravo and Chancellor Justin Lonan here to share the accomplishments of Dallas College and Mesquite I S D regarding dual-credit, the Early College High Schools, and P Techs.
Well, thank you all for the opportunity to be here. Thank you, Mr. President, board members, Dr. Rare. We appreciate the time that you're giving us, and clearly we came on the right night to get to hear these amazing successes of students in our community. I'm Justin Lonan. I serve as the chancellor of Dallas College and our seven campuses across Dallas County, including one you may be familiar with down the road here at Eastfield. And we brought the A Team tonight that will share a little bit more about the partnership that we have with you. We're very proud of the partnership with our students that are taking advantage of, we heard tonight, some of the dual-credit opportunities. And we want to ensure that we continue to grow that and provide opportunity for students throughout this community. I talk a lot about that Dallas College is in the barrier-busting business. And we know that oftentimes the transition from high school to college is a barrier for so many students. And so we have worked to invest in those students. First of all, our board has made the commitment to waive the tuition cost for dual-credit for those students. So later on this week, we will celebrate through six graduation ceremonies, the accomplishments of our students, and many of those will be high school students that are graduating with an associate's degree or with a credential from us. And so that means that they are starting ahead with their academic pursuits. It also means that they have not, they're not incurring any debt as they go on to their next step. And so at Dallas College, we have about 125,000 students. 30,000 of those are high school students. We have over 300 programs that include short-term certificates, associate's degrees, and also a four-year degree in early childhood education, that we're going to celebrate that first group of students graduating with their four-year degree this week. And we look forward to them joining Mesquite I S D and other I S Ds in the community. But we can only do the things that we do at Dallas College with the leadership and support of our board. And so I'm privileged to have with us our board chair, Monica Lyra Bravo, who is in her seventh year on our board, her second term as our board chair. So with that, Madam Chair.
Good evening, everyone. I've had the honor of meeting some of y'all, and thank you so much for your service that you do to all of our community. You make our jobs easier for when your students come and join us at Dallas College. I am here representing all seven of my fellow, my six other fellow board members. But I'm especially proud to be here today because my district includes all of Mesquite. And so I love working with your different schools and hosting different workshops. Most of them are going to be at Eastfield because of the proximity. And so we are just so proud to be here today to thank you for your partnership with Dallas College, but to also highlight some of the great things that are going on at Dallas College. And with that, I would like to introduce a video highlighting a little bit of our successes at Dallas College.
Good evening. My name is Tiffany Kirksey, and I have the pleasure of serving as the Vice Provost of Educational Partnerships with Dallas College. We are so excited to be here with you this evening as we continue to highlight the great work that goes into dual-credit and the partnership that exists with this fine district. As you saw in the video and as Chancellor Lonan mentioned, we really remain in the barrier-bursting business. And this slide really represents that. As one of the largest community colleges within the state, we've really worked hard to ensure that finance is not a barrier to students moving forward and having economic mobility. So we are thrilled and excited that our students, who are non-dual-credit students, all students, they're welcome to take classes with us at Dallas College for just $79 per credit hour, and that includes their resource fee, again, removing a barrier of not having materials and access to education. We know that this great work is important because, as we all are aware, there's a great need in this area and within this state to ensure that we're meeting the needs of our industry partners. We recognize that more than 50% of our partners are indicating their jobs need certificates, skilled workers, degreed individuals to come in and fill the workforce demand that exists. And oftentimes, 1 in 4 students is not moving into a livable wage position as they progress. So we recognize a great responsibility to this community to continue to find ways to increase opportunities for students, one of those being by way of dual-credit, early college high school, and P Tech programs. In our college, we've really rapidly worked in the space with our I S D partners. Great work has been done here with Mesquite Independent School District to really increase the number of students that are taking advantage of dual-credit learning opportunities. We are excited that just last year, we had over 2,000 students earning associate's degrees and certificates. That tapping into that need we just spoke about, really ensuring that students are not only leaving high school with a high school diploma, but oftentimes they're graduating with us before they even get that high school diploma in hand. And we know that that creates a pipeline to economic mobility. We've had the benefit of the support of our board, who's really cultivated an environment where we can allow students to continue to engage and to thrive in these dual-credit programs. And in this last year, we scholarship more than $16 million to provide dual-credit opportunities for students within our community. As Chancellor Lonan mentioned, we have about 30,000 students who are now taking advantage of these programs, and we continue to see that number growing. So we're very excited about the work that's happening in this space and this really being a pipeline to them being able to advance. This slide takes a moment to just show you the trajectory of our dual-credit, early college, and P Tech programs, as we really have rapidly worked to create opportunities for students. And it's not just based on, you know, our identification of what the industry And it's not just based on, you know, our identification of what the industry needs, but it's really based on the demand of the community, students interested, parents and families wanting opportunities for their students. As we even heard many of the salutatorians and valedictorians this evening graduating with dual credit hours awarded already, them now taking those as they go into the next steps in their career. And these programs and this expansion really represents our commitment to ensuring that this opportunity is available for as many students as possible within our community. This is where we are excited and get to celebrate because we get to talk a little bit about Mesquite. And so, we are really thrilled about the partnership that continues to exist and the great work being done. And just the last year, in our last academic year, over 1,600 students within this school district participated in dual credit and early college, high school, PTEC programming. That was about 13,000 hours of college credit that these students are now armed with and able to take forward into their next endeavor, whether they're going into industry and gaining skill, or whether they're transferring into other institutions, or even remaining with us as they finish high school and finishing out their associate's degree programs. Now, while 1,600 is exciting, and that certainly is something to celebrate, the 88% of students who are successful is really where we celebrate. That means that these students are earning an A, a B, or a C in their collegiate coursework. And as all of us know, these are students that are balancing high school, all their clubs and extracurriculars. Many of them have jobs and employment responsibilities to support and help their families, and yet still, a significant portion of these students who attempt to take dual credit are successful. And we know one of the reasons for that really lies, again, in the partnership, your commitment to provide resources for these students at the high schools, staff, teachers who are supporting them through their experience, and many of the supports that we've built in at the college to ensure that students who are in high school don't just come in and have to figure it out, but rather that they have a wraparound collegiate experience from both the high school and the college. That's the way that the number really works and that it makes sense. Dallas College, we're excited to share we've provided over $800,000 to students within Mesquite ISD by way of waivers. So the students who are talking about the dual credit courses that they've completed have done that at no cost, no cost to their families, no cost to the school district. We really remain committed to providing that opportunity. And thanks to your generosity, the students in this district benefit from also having their resource fees paid by Mesquite ISD. That means that a student who wants to take dual credit does not have to pay tuition by way of Dallas College, and by way of your school district does not have to pay for their books. Now, that is what bursting barriers looks like, right? That is us really creating not only an opportunity, but giving students a path to be able to earn that credit and to be successful. So we're really excited about that. We also wanted to highlight that last year, we had five students earning an associate's degree from Mesquite Independent School District, and that's a big deal. When you are a high school student and you earn an associate's degree graduating in May before you graduate from high school, that's something to celebrate. In just a couple of days, we actually have the Dallas College commencement, and we're excited that over 20 students from Mesquite Independent School District are eligible to participate in that commencement. So all of these things are wins. All of these things really represent the great work that exists, and it's really the benefit and at the heart of what we want to do for our students, and so, we thank you for your partnership. We're going to take just a moment to introduce you a bit more to some of the exciting things that are happening at our Eastfield campus, and I invite Dr. Tealer to the stage.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Kirksey. It's good to see everyone tonight. Well, I'm very excited to talk about, a little bit about Eastfield through the great vision of our Dallas College Board of Trustees, our Chancellor, and of course, our taxpayers. We're getting a new front door at the Eastfield campus. Of course, many of you are aware, because every time you see me, I'm always talking about this great facility. But anyway, it's one of the biggest footprints on our campus. It's 116,000 square feet. It'll have 25 state-of-the-art classrooms, so our MISD students will be part of that, as well as some new STEM labs. It'll have 50 faculty offices. So what that means is faculty and students will be able to interact even more closely in that facility. And most importantly, to our city, to our entire community, we're going to have a wonderful space for convening. It will hold over 400 individuals. It will open up to a courtyard that will expand that capacity. So we're really excited about what's happening over at Eastfield. So if you haven't been down mildly, please come down and take a look. Some of the great things that we are also doing for our students to ensure student success, we have a wonderful opportunity to serve our students with our food pantries. All seven of our campuses have food pantries and clothing closets. And since the beginning of this semester, which was in January, this food pantry here, our Honeycomb Food Pantry at Eastfield, have had over 4,500 visits. So that really tells us that we're meeting the need. And more importantly, we make every student that enter that space feel comfortable. And our community partners, anyone in our community can access this space, this pantry, as well as our clothing closet on Fridays from 9 to 5 at any of our seven campuses. So when we talk about community, in February, we had a wonderful State of the Community address here in Mesquite with Mayor Alamon, and then our City Manager Cahili, Superintendent Rivera, and myself. And we talked about partnering in, you know, as Chancellor Lonan has said, the barrier-busting business. But what we have done here through this great partnership with our new auditorium, which is going to be an awesome facility that will open in spring of 2024, we know that our MISD students are really excited, the swim team, but we're really looking forward to that project. So not only do we talk about it, but this is a wonderful illustration of how we can come together and solve our problems. So I'm really excited about the future. I really appreciate the support that you all show, and we will look to the future. So I think we have one more slide with Dr. Kirksey that will close it out.
And as we've talked about a lot this evening, dual credit opportunities, the great work happening for our high school students, we wanted to disclose by highlighting the fact that it doesn't end at dual credit. By way of Dallas Promise, students have the opportunity to continue to engage with us. So as we look at these high school seniors who are coming out of their programs and the partnership that exists with MISD, we are able to provide students opportunities to earn certificates, associate's degrees, and again, remove the burden of a financial barrier for students by having access through Dallas Promise. So we are really excited, again, appreciative of the partnership that exists. We know that our students are successful when we work collaboratively. As Dr. Tealer mentioned, the auditorium is just one example of the many opportunities that we see here, and we continue to appreciate your partnership. Thank you for some of your effort, for the time this evening.
I want to personally take the time to thank the Dallas College team for coming over and sharing those stats with us and the overview. But I would appreciate the partnership that we have because, as you guys so eloquently explained, our students have a lot of access. That 88% success rate is a collaboration between your organization and ours, and we're so thankful because we know that removing the obstacles for post-secondary, right, is about time and money, time and money. And by students receiving dual credit courses, we cut down on those two things, time and money. So we appreciate the partnership, not only in the auditorium, but as a continuous effort to work together to serve our community and to meet their needs.
Thanks to each of you again for the wonderful presentation. We appreciate you. Laura, we'll move on with student and staff guests.
Okay. Next, Seaborn Elementary is here. They are going to be honored as the grand champion of the Read to the Final Four. And we are recognizing Director of Library Services, Emma McDonald, Seaborn Principal, Renee Kern, and Seaborn Librarian, Ashley Cook. And we have a short video that explains more about their challenge. Do we have their video ready in the back? I believe we have a short video to show. Okay, we're going to pause for just a moment because we're not sure where our video is. We are going to move on to recognize our Nurses of the Year. Here to introduce our nurses and tell a little bit more about this award is Director of Health Services, Macy Dossie. And I'll let you introduce our winners.
On Wednesday, the 10th, it is also School Nurse Day. And so, in lieu of that, we're recognizing two nurses tonight. Rookie Nurse of the Year is Brittany Artigas, and School Nurse of the Year is Tina Penfield. Both of... So both of these ladies happen to be middle school, what are you, nurses? Both of them are middle school nurses, and they run extremely busy clinics. But here are y'all's pictures. Extremely busy clinics. Their clinics actually have more student clinic flow than our high schools, and they do so without clinic aides. This is Brittany from Wilkinson Middle School and Tina from Terry Middle School. So anyways, in Health Services, we've coined the hashtag Nursing Excellence, and that's what these ladies do. So thank you.
Well, unfortunately, we're not going to be able to show that video this evening, but perhaps we could show it next month, okay? Next is our MISD Counselors of the Year, and we're proud to recognize our School Counselors of the Year. Here to introduce them, well, here to recognize them is Kristy Davis, and our Elementary Counselor of the Year is Devery McBryce at Range Elementary. And Secondary Counselor of the Year is Mr. Rick Benavides.
They love, they love this attention. They both love it. They are both, oh, they are both servant-hearted. They had tons and tons of recommendations from staff, administrators, and most importantly, students and parents. And they emulate best care anywhere, and they are our Counselors of the Year.
All right. Next, we have our Mesquite ISD community partner for Replay Talk, and I believe we have a video about them. Let's hope so. Here we go.
This month, we're recognizing Walmart and Garland for a donation they made to Mesquite ISD this spring. Walmart made a large donation of craft supplies to our district a couple of months ago. We were able to take the craft tubs that were donated and distribute them in our parent education programs, as well as within our Lena Star groups. Walmart also donated lots of coloring books and crayons, which we plan to distribute at our events this summer. Thank you, Walmart of Garland, for supporting our students and for this incredibly generous gift.
And before we recognize more students, we do have a short video to play that showcases our one-act play, district and by district results, our state VASE winners, and the Principals Award for Art.
The Principals Award is presented to the student whose artwork speaks to their campus's principal. Each year, the art teachers on every MISD campus curate a gallery of student work for this award. From this selection, their campus principal personally chooses their favorite piece. The honor of Principals Award winner is given to the artist whose work their school's principal has chosen. Mesquite ISD extends their congratulations to these talented artists.
Okay, now, and on to recognizing some more students for their academics. The following student councils were recognized by the State of Texas for their exemplary record of leadership, service, and activities that improve the school and community. From North Mesquite High School, their student council has been recognized as a 2023 National Gold Council of Excellence by the National Student Council, and is a Sweepstakes Award winner by the Texas Association of Student Councils. And their sponsor is Kristen Haywood. West Mesquite High School Student Council has been recognized as a 2023 National Gold Council of Excellence, a 2023 Outstanding Council for Texas, and a 2023 Sweepstakes Council of Texas. And their principal is here with them, Carrie Morris. John Horn High School Student Council has been recognized as a 2023 Sweepstakes Council of Texas, and their sponsor is Michelle Griffin. and their sponsor is Michelle Griffin. From Rutherford Elementary, our chess champion, first place, is Hector Rogel. Hector is our champion for the upper grades. And for the lower grades, please welcome Grayson Swint. We actually have the pleasure of having the entire chess team from Rutherford here. They are all contributing to Rutherford's win, applying thinking, focus strategies, patience, and hard work. And let me recognize them by name. We have Maximiliano Mendoza, Cesar Yanis, Emmanuel Gonzalez, Berlin Avina, Ben Clark, Mateo Guardardo, Isaiahz Gonzalez, Aaron de la Cruz, Neil Gozman, Eton de la Cruz, Emir Ariaga, Juan Pablo Martinez, Ariana Vasquez, and Juan Gaminho. And their sponsors are Jose Mendiola and Miguel Lopez. The following groups are winning teams from the Code Play Talk Hackathon. Number one, Seaburn Coding Clubs. They were the K through first grade winners. And their coach is Karina Aguilar. Wow, that's awesome. Our second and third grade winners came from Beasley. They are the Beasley Happy Hackers, and their coach is Michelle McComas. From Range Elementary, these are our fourth and fifth grade winners. They are the Range Hack Hers, H-E-R-S. And their coaches are Natasha Gray and Katrina Murphy. And our last group of winners is our sixth to eighth grade winners from Vanston. They are the Honey Buns of Doom. And their coaches are Laura Brown and Tracy Slaughter. And our last group of students to recognize tonight are from the Amazing Shake Competition. From Floyd Elementary, we have Shelley Luna. From Floyd Elementary, Natalie Winship. From Galloway Elementary, Tanya Reyes. From Tosh Elementary, Amaris Knight. Amaris, excuse me, Amaris Knight. From Black Elementary, please welcome Victoria Mendoza Gonzalez. Next, from Price Elementary, is Angel Ajiman. We have a special guest tonight. Her name is Elena Franco. She is from Red Oak in Shands Elementary, and she joined us in the competition this year. So please welcome her. From Motley Elementary is Sebastian Godinez. Next, from Porter Elementary, is Alice Tronk. And last but not least is our district champion, Emerson King, from Smith Elementary. And Emerson is receiving a trophy from the coordinators of the Amazing Shake program, Mandy Teklenberg, Deidre Reeves, and Erin Tebola. And that concludes our recognition this evening.
Okay. Just in a minute. Next on the agenda, we have the Consent Agenda. We have a motion by Mr. Bingham and a second by Mr. Seward to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is under audiences. Ms. Jobe, do we have anyone here that wishes to address the board?
I'm not aware of anyone.
Okay. Next is personnel under reports of the superintendent. We have some action to take, and we'll let Dr. Rivera start off.
Yes, Mr. President, we have administration recommendations. So we'd like to have that as an action item before I introduce the candidate. So would you entertain a vote?
Move to approve.
I have a motion by Mr. Seward and a second by Mrs. Hornsby to approve... Are we doing all the appointments under item number one?
Yes, sir.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Go ahead, Dr. Rivera.
Okay. Mr. Morris?
Now that y'all have already approved this recommendation, I'm gonna introduce them as the new Director of Administrative Services. So I'd like April Sarpy to come join me at the podium. A little bit about April. April earned a bachelor's degree in English with a minor in writing at Stephen F. Austin University. Later, she received her master's degree in Educational Administration and Policy Studies from the University of Texas at Arlington. April has been in public education for 18 years with campus experience at every level. She started her career as a seventh and then 10th grade teacher of English at Tatum ISD. And after moving to Mesquite, she continued her work at the middle school level, serving as a seventh and eighth grade English language arts teacher, instructional coach, and a testing coordinator at Wilkinson Middle School. For four years, she was an assistant principal at McDonald Middle School, and for the past five years, she's been the principal at Galloway. She has graduated from the Holdsworth Center Campus Leadership Program and has been an MISD mentor principal for the past two years, April Sarpy.
Good evening. I would like to thank the board, Dr. Rivera, and the cabinet for this moment to share words of gratitude. Those who know me well know I'm gifted with words, and I have a penchant for being long-winded, so I'll keep this as concise as possible. As was read in my bio, I've worked here in Mesquite for 15 years, six years at Wilkinson, four at McDonald, and now the last five years at Galloway. I have vivid memories of each school I've worked in and still have valuable relationships in each of these places. So I would be remiss if I did not take the opportunity to pay homage to the leaders who have shaped me into the person I am today. Dr. Valerie Nelson, Dr. Leslie Feinglass, who has been my supervisor in three different capacities. Deborah Bassinger, who, when I said I wanted to be a principal, made sure I was given rich experiences and responsibilities that ensured I was ready for the role. My current supervisor, Dr. Goss, who has supported and gently challenged me to reach my goals. And my brother, my broski, Gerald L. Sarpy II, who has been a constant source of guidance and love in all things. To the rest of my Sarpy family, Jaclyn, my sister-in-law, my nieces Reagan and Kennedy, and to my mother, who you all have lovingly named Mama Sarpy, thank you all for your love and support. To my best friend, Michelle Joseph, my extended family in East Texas, and my West Side peeps, love, love. And finally, to my Galloway family, including my sister-in-law, Keisha Laverne, I am honored to have served with you and alongside you for the past five years. We have been through so much together, and I cannot think of a group of people who is more loving, kind, hardworking, and service-oriented than the staff who gather each week at 200 Clary Drive. I love you all. Again, thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, our next one, do we have the Director of bilingual ESL, Ms. Carolina Portillo-Prieto? Is she here? Okay, there you go.
Good afternoon. I'm very excited to introduce Kristy Tradman as our new B testing coordinator. Three words define Kristy Tradman: dependable, committed, and professional. Kristy started her professional career as an educator at Thompson Elementary back in 1995, where she rapidly developed to be a very successful teacher of first, second, and third grade students. For the following two years, Motley was her home campus, where she was able to combine her classroom expertise with her language development instructional abilities to succeed as the campus ESL teacher. Her ample knowledge and her desire to make an even larger impact pushed her to become a district ESL leader. Once there, she flourished a set of skills and created a robust support system for teachers and campuses, not only in the instructional area, but also in the compliance field. Today, with 28 years of full commitment to Mesquite ISD, we want to recognize Kristy as our new bilingual and ESL enrollment services coordinator. We are positive that she possesses all the necessary abilities and skills required to excel in this new role. Welcome Kristy to this position.
Now we're gonna move on to the Assistant Principals, and I believe Ms. Jobe is gonna take it from here.
There we go, okay. All right. Our new assistant principal at Elsie Shands Elementary School is Caitlin Brandt. Ms. Brandt has completed 12 years in the field of education, all with Mesquite ISD. She started her career as a second-grade teacher at Beasley Elementary, and she served as a campus intervention specialist at Beasley and Austin Elementary, and is currently an instructional specialist at Beasley Elementary. She earned a Bachelor's of Science in Elementary Education from Arlington Baptist and a Master's in Educational Administration from Texas A&amp;M Commerce. Congratulations, Caitlin. And the new assistant principal at Sue Ann Mackey Elementary School is Fondre Townsend. Mr. Townsend has completed seven years in the field of education, all at Terry Middle School in Mesquite. He is an ETIP Campus Scholar and teaches Principles of Applied Engineering. Fondre served as the US Navy, in the US Navy, for eight years and is an adjunct professor of accounting and finance with the University of Phoenix. He earned a Bachelor's of Arts in Management Information Systems from Prairie A&amp;M University and a Master's in Educational Administration from Texas A&amp;M Commerce. Congratulations. And the new assistant principal at Terry Middle School is Shaughnessy Gray. Shaughnessy has completed 19 years in the field of education in Florida and Texas, primarily as a science teacher and campus instructional coach. She became an assistant principal and has served at Comstock Middle School since 2021. Shaughnessy earned a Bachelor of Science degree in Biology from Florida A&amp;M University and a Master's degree in Educational Administration from Lamar University. Welcome. Congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. Jobe. And those are the items. Thank you, Board, for approving those recommendations from administration. We do have one more. It's a report. And so would Alicia Austin please come to the lectern? Alicia is being named Executive Director of Accountability Research and Evaluation for Mesquite ISD. Ms. Austin is completing her 27th year in education, all which have been spent here at her home Mesquite ISD. Alicia started her career in Mesquite ISD, teaching Spanish I, II, and III at Potteet High School, where she also led academic decathlon program. In 2004, she moved to the position of assistant principal at Potteet High School, where she served for two years before moving as an assistant principal to West Mesquite High School. Alicia served as assistant principal of West for six years, where she spent her time in a role as a registrar as well. She was then promoted to be the principal of West Mesquite High School in June of 2012, and she served in that position until 2019, when she was hired as the Executive Director of Data Management and Information Systems, and currently serves in that role today. Alicia received her BA in Liberal Arts from Texas A&amp;M University with a double major in English and Political Science. She then completed her Master's in Educational Administration from Texas A&amp;M University in Commerce. Ms. Austin?
Thank you. Well, Dr. Veron, Board, I have stood before you all a few times now, expressing my gratitude on positions, and this one is the perfect job for me. I'm really excited about the position. I appreciate your confidence in me to take on this role, filling some amazing shoes that Donna McCade has left behind, but we'd be remiss if we don't acknowledge her contribution to our district, and I am looking forward to continuing her work. to our district, and I am looking forward to continuing her work for our students and our district. So thank you.
Congratulations to each of you. Before we take a break, Board, if it's okay, we'll go ahead and take action on these three final items under personnel.
You want them all together?
I don't know if we can do them all together separately.
No.
Yes, sir.
Five has to be separate.
Yeah, they have to be separate.
Wait just a minute while our superintendent consults our communications director. First item is to approve the probationary and term contract recommendations.
Please approve.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Carbo and a second by Ms. Collier. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next item is to approve contract recommendations. I have a motion by Mr. Carbo and a second by Ms. Collier. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Last item under personnel is to approve the termination of the probationary contract as discussed in closed meeting.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Rose and a second by Ms. Hornsby. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. At this time, we'll take about a 10-minute break. Okay, the time is now 8:05 PM, and we will resume our meeting. Next item is under the effectiveness report, and we get to hear a report from our athletic director, Mr. Cody Groves. Welcome, Cody.
Our coaches did some great things. I know, just so I can recognize them, my staff was here earlier, but they needed to skate out a little bit early. But, well, I'll go ahead and hop in. I know time's precious, but athletics, appreciate Aaron Libby putting this together for us. But gonna start off kind of bragging. We had a lot of district champs this year. Potteet Tennis, and I'll just kind of highlight some of these. Potteet Tennis, a lot of playoff teams. Had multiple district champs in basketball this year. Soccer, multiple district champs and playoff qualifiers. Swim team, like always, did an incredible job sending, I think we ended up sending 12 or 13 kids to regionals. Softball, I will take a second and brag on some teams. We did have West Mesquite softball this year. They made the playoffs for the first time in over 25 years. And not only made the playoffs, but won the district championship with North Mesquite, won playoff games, and so we're really proud of them. It's pretty incredible what they did this year. Great turnaround, and participation numbers are great, so we're really proud of that program. Track, we had another successful year. I think we had 68 kids go on to regionals in track, and we had two qualify for state, and they run this coming weekend down in Austin. Wrestling, for year one of a wrestling program, we sent 11 kids to regionals, and we had two kids qualify for the state meet, and actually had a state medalist in year one. And we did have a lot of programs brag about that. I mean, our kids have been doing this for six months, going up against kids that have been doing it their entire life. And so a lot of recognition for Mesquite Wrestling in year one. Baseball, currently, we still have Potteet High School playing in the playoffs. And again, the last one down there is Potteet Golf, won district this year. Academic Allstate, we like to brag on this one. I think it's really important. It requires the coaches to actually nominate their kids, so we put a lot on the coaches. There's pretty big criteria, but all around the state, we had 65 kids qualify for first or second-team academic allstate. And then the next fun part to brag on is we kind of kicked back up our scholarships this year. Now, there's some that didn't get added on this. I tried to add them last minute. We still have signing days going on and adding kids, but you can kind of see the list. You know, Horn High School, Mesquite High School had quite a few. North, Potteet, and West kind of got their numbers back where they needed to be. Now, I will note on this, just when we're talking about effectiveness report, continue to understand the challenges we face with scholarships. There's a couple of major challenges. A few years back, post-COVID, NCAA tweaked their rules. They gave a lot of extra eligibility to kids, so they gave them an entire extra year of eligibility. We're still seeing the effects of that. In addition, the transfer portal, they're not really recruiting high school kids like they used to, when they can go out and just grab a kid that's already in college, they're already older, they are already successful at the school that they're at. And so as they're recruiting, they're just going and getting kids to transfer to their school, as opposed to recruiting straight out of high school. So that's a challenge we continue to face, and we continue to battle. And then in addition, we're fighting the world of NIL. And kind of just an update, they're trying to push that into high schools right now. They do it in other states, and they're talking about doing that potentially in Texas down the road. And so that's a challenge we're going to have to be able to step up and face and see what that looks like for student athletes moving forward at the high school level. Middle school athletics, another great year with middle school athletics. With our 10 schools, we have over 3,300 participants in middle school athletics. I will say this, we started middle school soccer last year. This is year two of doing it, and the numbers are incredible. We have a lot of participation. We have a lot of fans coming out. It's been a big win adding middle school soccer. So a little more of a challenge for us. I mean, we just keep adding on events that you're hosting. Puts a lot of challenge on our administrators covering those events, security. But if we got the kids to do it, we want to give the kids that opportunity. So middle school soccer's been very successful. In addition, at the high school, I already noted on this, we did add wrestling this year. And as you can see at the numbers, with the size of Horn's growth right now, they had over 700 kids participate in athletics this year, in comparison to some of our others that are hovering around 500. We have a lot of kids participating at Horn High School. More so than what they do on the field is what they do off the field. I'm very proud of our kids, community outreach, diving into the community, getting into the middle schools, servant leadership. They find every way that they can, and I appreciate our coaches for extending that and encouraging our kids to participate in these extracurricular activities off the field. We've talked about this before, but just kind of to give everyone a scope of what we do, we hosted over 3,100 events this year. Actually, our kids participated in over 3,100, and just in Mesquite ISD alone and city limits, we hosted over 1,400 events, which makes for a pretty busy schedule over a nine-month period of time. What our office has to do is we have to find a way to staff that. So over those 1,400 events, we pay over 4,000 paid positions that the athletic office has to staff, and we do that with teachers, custodians, administrative assistants, anyone we can that wants to come and work our events. And so we appreciate all those that help us put on the event. And then I wanted to give a brief update. I know Dawn and Graham may talk about this here in a minute, but just through the lens of athletics, we are more than appreciative of everything you do for us to give our kids the best facilities possible. Over the last, I mean, I've been in Mesquite 10, 11 years, and the growth that we've seen in our facilities, I mean, we cannot thank you enough, both from our coaches, our kids, our parents, the community. So a couple of things that kind of got going on, we were currently re-turfing Hamby Stadium. We approved a wrestling golf facility, and you see a picture down at the very bottom, and hopefully we can get you all scheduled to come over there here pretty soon to see that. The pavilions are going up. The first one should be completed next week over at Potteet High School. The natatorium, it's a giant hole right now, but there's a lot going on over there at Eastfield. But just, I cannot list everything that you've done. We, again, more than grateful and thankful for the support of the board to give our kids the best opportunity possible to be successful. A couple of things new to athletics this year, again, in addition to adding a couple of sports, we did start a new app for athletics. So we've kind of, an extension of our school district website, we have an athletic website, but we also have an app. And in that app, which I hope that we can get more and more people, we just put it in around Christmas time this year, but you can up-to-date scores, you can watch the live streams on that link, you can buy your tickets, the schedules, everything that you'd want is in that one location. So we started that this year. Again, we've continued to grow our hometown ticketing with online tickets post-COVID. That was one of the things that we discovered and kind of got better and better every single year is going through that. We continue to do an assistant coach academy, trying to grow our own leaders. We partner with 40 ISD to do that with our coaches. And then we're continuing the best we can to continue to work on safety and security and partnering with Taylor Morris's office to find the best way to put on our events in a safe way. And again, challenges are constantly adjusting those strategies. Best practices, police, and SRO scheduling. I think Joe has done a great job this year. Sergeant Smith has done a great, I mean, we've been staffed fully every event, and it's been really impressive what we've done, because it was a challenge the last couple of years. But we just need to continue to properly staff each campus, all the coaching staffs. I know you all have been working on that with all kinds of different ways to recruit our teachers, and we do appreciate those efforts. We continue to got to work on that to staff our coaches. It is, it's a competitive market. You're out there trying to get the best for our kids, and so that's a constant challenge to continue to have them choose Mesquite ISD. And so we think we got one of the best places in the world to work, so we're thankful for that. Why is athletics important? Again, as your athletic director, hopefully I spoke on this during my tenure as a coach in this district, but we care a lot more about what goes on off the field than what goes on the field. We're trying to raise our kids to be great community members. It's important for our kids to be a part of their community, connected to their community, to serve their community. The camaraderie it builds, the confidence it builds in these kids, and that's why athletics is important. And you can just see a couple of these pictures right here. It's just, we want it to be the best part of their day when they're with us. That's the motto. When they come to our programs, we want them to leave, and that's the best part of their day. And we want them to love their entire educational experience. But it's our job, through the lens of athletics, to make sure that we're building programs they can't live without. So for myself, and like I said, our athletic department, all our coaches, we just want to say thank you, and hopefully that gave you just a little snapshot of what we've been doing this last year. Okay?
Just a quick little shout-out, didn't you have one of yours drafted last week?
You what?
Didn't you have one of your students drafted last week?
We did have a couple, a couple former Potteet football players. I think one's playing for the Packers, and I cannot remember.
Eagles.
Eagles. And then we have a Horn athlete. I got to remember where he went to. It's been a busy few weeks, but yeah, that's something to brag about. So we got a few more kids with an opportunity to play professionally, and anytime they can go out there and kind of celebrate Mesquite and talk about it and shine a bright light on us, we appreciate it. So again, thanks for all you all do.
So is the Hamby elevator faster now?
The Hamby elevator is slow, but it's really nice. It's really, really nice. And it's not going to get stuck, I promise.
No, because it's going up, and people don't realize it's really going up like 100 feet, and you think it's going just up one floor, but it's not. It's going up a tall tower.
It's a long way.
So that's why people think it's really slow, but it's not.
No, it's top-notch. It's much-needed. All I know is last time I took it, I had to take my lunch with me. Thank you.
Thank you, Coach Groves. Next item is under administration. It's a report on the superintendent's advisory council. Dr. Rivera?
Yes, Mr. President. So the next group of people you're going to hear from is a group of special people that Dr. Fields and I got the pleasure of interacting with this year, and so they have a presentation they want to give to the school board so to let you know what they spent their time in. So who's first? Ladies and gentlemen, let's go. You're up. These are our leaders. Superintendent Advisory Council.
So later, and I think you have a clicker up there? With Brian.
Where's the clicker? Oh. Okay. Hello, good evening. We're from Mesquite High School, and today we would like to present to you a few topics from our findings in surveying our feeder schools. I'm Stephen Saban. This is Lilith Swint and Mariel Flores.
So when we sent out surveys to Mesquite High School students and the middle feeder and the elementary feeder schools, we found one major issue that everyone seemed to mention in the survey was the issue of respect between students and staff. There seemed to be some problems there, and as like subcategories of that, many people talked about inconsistent discipline practices and not feeling connected in their classrooms and with each other and with their teachers.
One of the proposed solutions is increasing discipline consistency. Like Lilith said, many of the students who took our survey expressed that they felt that punishments that were being given to them for minor offenses were a bit too extreme. For example, many students showed that they would get ISS for small things such as tardies, and we believe that maybe the feeder schools should look at their disciplinary policy and just try to balance it out a little more with the students. And our second, our second proposed solution is investing in learning environments. For example, we've heard of flexible seating in classrooms, which is where you give students more than one option, such as yoga balls or beanbag chairs, and this would enhance the learning environment and encourage students to participate more in classrooms while also, while also bringing the connection between the students and the teachers closer together.
And one final thing we would like to mention in terms of connecting students and the teachers and the staff is truly recognizing what teachers and other staff on campus does for the students, for everyone there. It's a team, and I believe this week is Appreciating Teachers Week, so I just wanted to mention
Thank you for your time and for hearing our portion of this presentation. We hope that this can kind of bring to attention some things and hopefully lead to some changes or decisions that can lead to environments where teachers and students can have higher levels of respect for each other. Again, thank you for your time. Good evening.
We are North Mesquite. My name is Madison. This is Anna, Zach, and Alex. We just have a couple of issues and solutions to present to you guys today that we found from our feeder pattern.
One of the first issues that we heard about is the common formative assessments or CFAs that are taken at the middle schools. A lot of the students said that they felt like they happened too often, they were once a week, and when they took those once a week, they were their entire class period. Additionally, they felt the additional stress that if they did bad on it, there were no test corrections, and they had a heavy weight.
test corrections and they had a heavy weight on their grade. So there was nothing they could do to make anything better, even if they did improve.
Our solutions to this problem was to allow test corrections on the CFAs and for them to carry less weight on the students' grades. Fortunately, after meeting with Dr. Rivera, this issue was promptly corrected.
Okay. Another issue was dress code. It was, it's restrictive, which doesn't allow students for self-expression, and it also places a financial burden on families.
So when we spoke with one of the administrators at McDonald, she said that she observed as over time, the dress code rules had gotten less strict, and as a result, less kids were getting punished, you know, spending time in ISS, and they were spending more time in the classroom learning. So that's also something that we noticed a lot at the high school that as over time, we get looser with the dress code and people spend less time in ISS or in detention or whatever. But we do know that that poses an issue of like making it more difficult to identify students and place them where they need to be at a given time. So our proposal was to enforce stricter rules on IDs to potentially say like, it was attempted this year, but to say that you need to have it at lunch, you need to have it to get here, to get here, to get here, whatever. It would make it more easy to place students where they need to be at any given time. Thank you so much for listening to this. We really appreciate your time.
Hi, my name is Myla Taylor.
And I'm Isaac Campos.
And we are the representatives from, from West Mesquite High School, and we will be presenting the issues that we found within our feeder pattern. So we will first be starting at our own level at West Mesquite High School. So we were struggled to identify specific issues, but we felt that there is room for improvement at our high school. So currently, we feel as though students do not have easy access to all the opportunities that are available at West Mesquite High School. So whether that be dual credit classes or AP classes, or even like the new clubs that are being founded and fostered at, at West Mesquite High School, sometimes the students are not aware. So we thought that it, that it would be best for West Mesquite High School to create a focus group of students to help find the best way to help students get access to that information. So whether that be utilizing social media, social media websites such as Instagram or creating better use of announcements and making sure that those are implemented during advisory would be the best way to help ensure that students are aware of all the opportunities that they have at West Mesquite High School.
So the next that we went after was the middle schools. And so in middle schools, that's a time of where people really start to learn about themselves, and they try to explore a bunch of different avenues. But what we, what we saw with a lot of middle schoolers is that they didn't know how to do that. They knew they were lost. They knew they wanted to try new stuff, but they just didn't know how to. So one of the solutions that we came up with is a glimpse of high school where once a week, preferably on Fridays, different clubs from West Mesquite could go to these middle schools and show these middle schoolers what these classes later on in life have to offer and help to, help them to explore new activities and new desires that they want. And another thing that we also saw was that there was a lot of distrust of faculty in those middle schoolers. They didn't really know, they weren't open to faculty. They didn't know how to be open to them because they were really, because in that time period of middle school, you're really closed off and you just kind of don't want to interact with others. So one of the solutions that we came up with is being able to have just more open discussions with faculty and students, such as a middle school town hall where once a month, students would be able to voice their opinions to administrators and other faculty just to better connect with that.
And then finally, at our elementary school level, it was very fun to be able to go and meet with the middle, with the elementary school students. They had a very, an array of opinions, but what we wanted to focus on was them being able to use their excitement to engage in activity in the most constructive way. So a common problem at the elementary schools was having activities banned due to difficulty that came with supervising those activities or being able to make sure that the students got along. So a lot of the times, it's the activities that the students do want to engage in, they aren't available to them. Or there are games that they have yet to find that will be the best for their elementary schools. Then in addition to this, sometimes the elementary school students are limited to what they can do due to the use of equipment at their elementary school. So we decided that the best solutions would be to create a recess box for during recess. So when those games are, are banned, such as tag or things that are a little bit more physical, then they can use the recess box and have things such as shock or coloring books, jump rope, anything that's, that can still allow them to be active in a safe and constructive way. Then we also thought about creating safer PE games. So then students could still be active, but do so and ensure that no one's getting hurt and, and everyone feels that they have the equal opportunity to play and they don't want to abandon their PE time, which is a really great time to be active and be engaged within their schools. And then also finally would be replacing the, the PE equipment and making sure that the equipment that they're using is appropriate and make sure that they're safe. Because and then at the end of the day, we want to ensure that those elementary school students are playing and they're having fun, but they're also safe while doing so. And that is all that we have for y'all. And we'd like to thank you again for this opportunity to present these issues and solutions. Thank you.
Hi, we're from Johnhorn High School. I'm Lauren Kemp.
I'm Emily Serrano.
So one of the first problems we had for all middle schools, elementary schools and high schools was the lunch food in the cafeteria was dirty at all times. So we, one of our solutions was checking and making sure food wasn't expired because you have a lot of kids complaining about that happening and not wanting to eat. And I think it's very, it's important for kids to be able to eat. And then having vending machines working during lunches to give kids other options because not all kids want to eat lunchroom foods, but they just might need snack. And then making sure lunchrooms are getting more detail cleaned after students leave. And then the next one was.
So the next issue we had was bus drivers not like being completely respectful and not allowing like certain kids to sit where they want. So a solution we had for that is like kids don't have a seating chart. I know that kind of makes it easier, but when we went to like our feeder schools, there were like, there was a boy who complained that he wasn't able to sit with his brother, and that kind of caused problems because his brother was like younger than him. And obviously, since he's like younger, he was scared to sit by himself. So we think like not having a seating chart and just bus drivers listening to the students and allowing the kids to sit with their siblings, just be more understanding of the situation because yeah, seating chart's easier, but like you don't understand the situation, the kids. So I just feel like be more understanding would help. Oh, yeah. This is our picture.
And we just want to thank you for this opportunity. It was a great experience and yeah, have a good rest of your night.
Thank you.
So as you can see, this is directly from the students, you know? We didn't, we didn't edit that presentation. This was all from them. And, and so some of those items we've addressed, but as probably talked about some of our priorities. We talked about student and community engagement. We, we talked about those things and, and some of the conversations that we've had about relationship, social, emotional learning in students, but also staff and ensuring that those relationships get stronger. And so we're slowly addressing these things. The data, some of the data was some of the kids' feedback, some of the students as they met with us and told us what some of the things that needed to be addressed. We addressed some of them at the beginning as we went on and we kept getting the feedback. But all, the other ones are also built in into how we're moving forward for the following year. And the best data that I can think of is straight from students because they're the ones that experienced the environment in our schools. So thank you very much for coming in. I know it's been a long night. I appreciate you staying. I'm very proud of you and all these seniors will be going to college, so good luck. See you in graduation.
Students, students, do you feel like our superintendent was listening to your concerns?
Yes.
Okay. All right, well, good. We're glad to have y'all with us tonight. Next item on the agenda is also a report on the EAB teacher morale update. We will hear from Dr. Fields.
Good evening, President Everett, Board of Trustees and Dr. Rivera. In March, we shared with you the findings from our teacher morale study, and I'm here tonight to share with you some of the efforts we have begun in response to the findings that we, that we shared with you then. The study we conducted focused on six different areas that truly impact morale. And after getting feedback from our teachers, as you recall, the number one thing they said they really needed more of was time. That was the most critical factor that we heard from our teachers. We also shared this slide with you in March, and it underscores the need for teacher time, especially at the elementary level. The difference among the levels can be attributed really to two things. Elementary teachers oftentimes teach multiple subjects, which means a lot of preparation and planning time to teach reading, math, social studies and science. They also have a difference in the amount of planning and preparation time built into the master schedule compared to our secondary teachers. And we decided it was time to make a significant move to address that issue. Beginning next year, we are launching a pilot model at the elementary level that will provide teachers significantly more planning time. We're doing this by increasing the number of teachers in music, art and PE and increasing student learning time in those areas, which then gives their homeroom teacher significantly more time to plan high quality instruction for their students. So we're super excited about launching this, getting feedback from our teachers at the beginning of the year, making sure that it's meeting its intended need, and we're pretty optimistic about how they're gonna feel. But beyond just the provision of extra time, teachers told us that there were three factors that were significantly impacting their own use of time or the best use of their time. And that was IO, our, our work around that initiative, professional learning and professional learning communities, PLCs. So we embarked on a plan to develop some solutions to those issues. And in that plan, we said there were two non-negotiables. First, the solutions had to be co-created with teachers. They had to be at the table, part of the conversation and part of the brainstorming of the solutions. And the second one is that teachers needed to feel a noticeable impact next year in each of those three areas. So when it comes to the first topic, IO, what teachers told us through that survey was that they were a little bit unclear about the purpose of IO, that when it was launched, it was during a really difficult time, the pandemic, and that there was an inconsistent rollout. So what that felt like on one campus varied to another. So our progress to date, we are excited to share with you that we are shifting gears in the 23-24 school year. We're moving forward with a pilot approach. Five different campuses from two feeder patterns have volunteered to be part of the pilot. Teachers and administrators from those campuses came together in March and they began their work. They, of course, reviewed the teacher feedback. Then they revisited the IO purpose. They identified challenges in the initial IO rollout. And then beyond that, they began their own campus planning. They looked at their individual specific campus needs. They looked at the IO features and identified which ones really help address and support our campus needs. And they're in the process of developing implementation plans for 23-24. So what's going to be different for our teachers next year when it comes to IO? Well, for starters, for 47 campuses, IO will not be a major initiative. Teachers will simply continue the work they've begun, and campuses will include a strategy in their campus improvement plan aligned to their needs to make sure that the work continues on all of our campuses. But for those who elected to participate in the pilot and really advance the work of IO, each individual campus will determine their own path based on their own needs and work at their own pace. They will have extensive support from the IO support team because, again, we only have five campuses that are working on the pilot. So we're going to be able to really help them significantly through the process. Long term, of course, we plan to solicit feedback on the development of new IO features, and the pilot campuses are going to be really helpful in that. We'll be monitoring and supporting implementation at those pilot campuses and using the learnings from what they're going to be doing next year to draft a blueprint for IO expansion and replication in future years. So it will make the job of the campuses that follow much easier to expand the IO work. We also know that professional learning communities have presented something of a challenge to our teachers, even though we know it's a very valuable practice. Teachers are telling us that they're doing too much pre-work, that sometimes the pre-work that they're doing is redundant, and most importantly, they're not getting to the planning and delivery of lessons during the PLCs. So we convened another team to dive deeply into this topic and understand what needs to be addressed. And they too reviewed the teacher feedback from the study, and they discussed two key questions. Why are PLCs taking longer than the planning period? And why are teachers not leaving with planned lessons? We got a lot of great feedback from the committee at that point. One, of course, was the significant teacher inexperience that we were grappling with this year because we had so many new teachers coming into our workforce. And oftentimes, their needs are significant enough that it would stall out some of the PLC work. Teachers sometimes would come to the PLCs with incomplete pre-work. So again, go back to their concerns about it being too much, but the incomplete pre-work then created some challenges for what the PLCs were able to address. Teachers also reckoned that they were creating lots of no-show charts. And if you know what no-show charts, you have standards that you're teaching, and when you come into PLCs, part of the work is to make sure that everybody has a deep understanding of that standard. And so you unpack what do students need to know and what do students need to be able to do in order to demonstrate mastery of that standard. And teachers said that in their PLCs, they were spending a lot of time doing that and again, not getting to the, the planning and the implementation of the lesson. They also mentioned resources, had some concerns about how to use them, which resources for which subject area, and unsure of which ones would be the most beneficial to help them. So the process that's underway to address those concerns, we're really doing two things. And the first one is working on campus guidance, helping our campus administrators by grade level and by content area determine how many PLCs is really reasonable. What you can be doing at the secondary level versus the elementary level might vary based on what the teacher is teaching and how much planning time they have. We also are providing them some guidance on how to differentiate their PLCs. We're looking at tiering PLCs by readiness factors. So what I mean by that is if you have a grade level team with many new teachers on it, more of a beginning level of readiness, what we ask those teachers to do before, during and after the PLC will be different than what a group of veteran teachers who know their content very well and have been teaching the same grade level for an extended period of time. So again, narrowing down how many PLCs is reasonable for each area and providing principals some guidance on how they should be spending their time based on teacher needs. And I want to say with all of this, you know, our principals intentions are, our principals intentions are very good, but there is so much out there that could be done in PLCs, good, quality, meaningful tasks, but given our teachers' needs, we can't possibly do all of it. So our task is to provide them some guidance and how to, how to decide what is most important. And then the second part is providing them some resources, providing them with some no-show charts so they're not spending all of their time creating them, but they can utilize them as references, and providing them some exemplar videos for quick training to help them understand what might be expected in the upcoming PLC. So what's going to be different for PLCs for our teachers next year? They will be differentiated based on readiness. The amount of time teachers spend in PLCs will be streamlined. Lesson development and lesson delivery will be prioritized in PLCs, and campuses will be provided resources to reduce the PLC preparation time and the redundancy. Moving forward, our work is to provide principals with support in making those decisions. So our EDLDs will be good supports and points of contact for them to help them understand the resources and the guidance that we're giving them and to help them progress, monitor their teams and what tier they're at. We'll also be continuing to collect exemplar videos and providing new teacher pre-service support so that when those teachers enter our campuses and start participating in that process, they have a better understanding of what's expected. We know that professional learning is also incredibly important, but our teachers reported back to us that sometimes they find it to be redundant or repetitive, not differentiated and not including choice. So again, we have convened another team to tackle this work. And that team really has, has taken this work on two different paths. The first one is looking at what professional learning we have offered historically, inventorying it, categorizing it. Is it offered by the campus? Is it offered by the district? Is it really, really professional learning that helps me improve my craft? Or is it just required training that I'm participating in? We felt like we needed to get a lay of the land of what's really happening out there before we could figure out how to tackle it. And then the second part of that team's work was to take a look at the best practices for high quality professional learning. We have a wonderful framework that's been used in this district historically. We brought that back to the team. We looked at the research and made some adjustments to the district framework on what is quality professional learning. is quality professional learning. So currently, we're taking those learnings and working with department leaders to focus and prioritize our professional learning for next year. Of course, we'll put on the docket any required or mandated PL first, but then we'll be looking at PL that is aligned to our district goals and our district priorities. We also are going to be making sure that our teachers have time to practice and apply new learning, so we'll be embedding that in many of our PL days. So you might be looking at a PL day in October where teachers go to a short training in the morning, and then they go back to their campuses, and they're able to work in their classrooms or with their teams to implement the learning that they got in the morning rather than sitting through an entire day of professional learning and not having time to learn how to implement it. It's also important that our staff learn how to deliver high-quality PL. So we'll be working with our priority groups, of course, the teaching and learning staff, the EDLDs, and the campus leaders to make sure that we revisit what that high-quality PL is so that they can support it at the district level as well as the campus level. So what's going to be different with professional learning? District and campus professional learning will include significant time for practice and application. It will have a narrower focus and align to priorities and skills, which means we are going to practice some strategic abandonment. If we're focusing, we can't do everything, so some things are coming off the table. And we'll be including opportunities for differentiation based on skill, needs, and interest and experiences. Long term, this is a much bigger project. We already have a professional learning team in our district, and they are housed in our personnel department. But currently, they do not oversee all of the PL in the district. We really don't have a mechanism for doing that, to make sure that employees all have high-quality PL, that we're planning long-term, that we're strategic, that we're aligning all of our PL to the district priorities and the district needs, that we are publishing that in a way that people can see for the upcoming year what PL is going to be offered so I know how to plan my own professional learning. So our PL team is going to be taking on this task. It's going to be a work in progress. They're not a big team, but they're a mighty team. And so we have a lot of work to do, but we're really excited about what this potentially can yield when it comes to the quality of the PL that we're providing, but also the choices that we're able to give people and how strategically we are utilizing this opportunity to really improve what we can do for our students. So our next steps, first, is to share what I've shared with you here with our EAB focus groups, the ones who gave us all that feedback, and to ask them, this is what you told us. Have we met the need? Did we hear you correctly? And are we addressing your greatest concerns? And also to provide principals with an update for campus planning so they know how to take this information and begin their plans for next year. In June, we'll be finalizing the actions related to all of these plans, identifying our success criteria and figuring out how we're going to monitor progress. And then in October, we will be re-administering that EAB survey, and we will be conducting those focus groups again to see what feedback we can get from our teachers on the work that we've put in place. So that is where we are today with the EAB Teacher Morale Study. We're excited about it. We're optimistic about it, and we still have more work to do, so I'm sure I'll be returning to you with an update down the road. But right now, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. I just, I also want to thank, we have lots of different people. We have a lot of committees going, as you heard in the presentation. Lots of people are leading this work, so I just want to give credit to the assistant superintendents and the executive directors and directors leading this work because they know how important it is to all of us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Fields. Great report. Next item is a discussion item of the district-wide intruder detection audit report findings. We hear from Taylor Morris.
Last one of these this year, but we are May 8th, so there's still a few weeks of school left. We could get some more audits. I will say of our 49 campuses that are eligible to receive audits, 44 of them have gotten them. That's almost 90%. The state had guaranteed that we would get 75% of the districts in the state would be audited, so we've been audited more than what they hoped to get to. But, you know, I'm pretty proud of our campuses, 44 of the campuses that have been audited. There's a lot of hard work that has gone into this year, changing some of what we do on a daily basis, and so we're going to keep that work up. And I know Mr. Moore has been visiting campuses two a day since he's been here, almost every single day, and talking to them and seeing what their needs are, seeing how we can help as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Taylor. We'll move now to construction to hear a report on the overview of our construction projects. Mr. Don Poole. Welcome, Don.
That's right. Well, we appreciate the School Board, Board President, Dr. Rivera. We appreciate the opportunity for the construction update, our yearly time to brag about our construction projects that are currently under construction, not previous, not prior. So I don't, it's been a year. Okay. Here's Cross Elementary out there south of 20. The thing looks amazing. It's actually at, you know, pretty much the complete site, stage. We're ready for furniture to start coming in. We're going through inspections. This thing's going to be probably ready for her to move into at the 1st of July and, you know, latter part of June. It's in great shape, and it looks great. I could blow the pictures up, but I don't know how to do it with this. This is over at the Academy and Learning Center, the gymnasium that we're building for the both of them to use over there. The completion, it will be, you know, July of '23, ready to occupy next August. This is Mesquite High. We are currently, what you see there is underground drainage that's going to be there for the pavilion that's going to be built there. Right now, you know, pretty much all the dirt's off the fields, and you can pretty much see what's going on there right now, which then we're going to, at the same time, replace the turf, replace the scoreboard, you know, every, Mesquite High's going to have a busy football stadium over there. Completion is around 12:23 for this one. This is Potite High School. We're actually walking it tomorrow for substantial completion. This will be our first one that's complete. Looks fantastic. It's lit up great, and, you know, and it doesn't just look like a big old barn out in the middle of nowhere. It looks like, I mean, it is big, but it looks like it has a purpose. Yeah. North Mesquite will be the last one. We start, we'll basically start the last day of school. We have to take out the baseball field to be able to, the baseball outfield to be able to get to the site to get going there. So this one here will be the last one completed somewhere around January next year. West Mesquite, right now, the roof is going up on it. It should be completed by right around August. Horn and West Mesquite are both around the same time. Horn might not make August, but West Mesquite will. But we're pushing them. This is Horn High School, and you can see it's just a little bit behind West Mesquite. The Aquatic Center, it's been an interesting project, I will say that. We've had fun with it, and right now, it is a big hole in the ground with, believe it or not, water. So, but we have to take that back out. But it's on schedule. This summer, the open-air structural will be installed, and we're still planning on completion by December of '23. This was something that happened during the, during the last snowstorm. The girls' locker room, basically, the ceiling came down from the, it dropped a foot due to the weight of the snow and ice that was on top of it. So we had to shut it down and basically reroute the whole project and build it back up to where this would not happen again. This is the clinic. We're going to be naming the contractor tonight for this project. You'll see the schematic designs for this project tonight. It's, you know, once we're able to get it started, we're kind of thinking that August of '24 is the date that we're going to be able to hit on it, kind of depending on the ability to get the equipment. Mesquite Welding Lab, we have started that. This is a project that takes a year to get a lot of the equipment. It's a project that will actually last until December of '24 because we're not actually touching any of the, the classrooms we are touching right now, but we're not touching the welding lab because no use in taking it apart when we can't get the parts for another year. So that's, this one here is going to go on for a little while. This is Putting Green. They say that the Putting Green will be complete by the end of June, and we'll be able to put on it. Right now, you go over there, there's a big pile of dirt, and, you know, it's starting to look like a putting green. With that, we're also taking care of the drainage issues that have been there forever at Mesquite High going into that V building. It will also be taken care of with this project. And last but not least, Horn High School. Underground utilities are going in right now. Parking lots are going in. It is moving along well and with, you know, surprisingly, not a whole lot of commotion with the traffic. So we've been lucky there. But it's moving along well with completion of August '24. And that is it. If you have any questions, please let me know.
We're putting new classrooms in Horn, right?
Yeah, the wing.
The wing. How many? 14?
No, it's more than that, Graham.
24?
24. I was thinking 30.
Thank you.
600 students.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Don, the gymnasium at Learning Center?
Yes.
That's a completely separate building from the other two buildings?
Yes.
Will there be any type of a coverage structure, anything for, sort of, passing back and forth between the buildings?
So we couldn't cross the fire lane, obviously, with any structure. So we have structure that goes out to the curb for the Learning Center, and then it's parking lot, and then when you get on the other side, then the awnings take over again. Now, for the Academy, they can stay under awnings the whole way. It will carry for the current awnings across to the gymnasium.
That's also a tornado shelter, isn't it?
Yes, sir. Yes, that is a storm shelter. Yeah, for the freshman center or bench, whatever. A wing, that's correct.
Board, any other questions for Mr. Poole? Thank you, Don. Next item is an action item to approve the schematic drawings for the clinic project.
Graham, you're going to show more of his tie.
I was making that comment earlier.
I tell him that every week.
I'll have two ties on next time I come. Thank you for the opportunity. Right. You need that. Thank you for the opportunity to present the schematic design and design development for the Mesquite Employee Health Center. With me tonight, Project Manager Roland Gentry and Monica Castillo. She is our interior designer on this project. If you remember, we moved all the existing students from the Learning Center over to the Linda Samples Technology Center and the new Learning Center location. This building will be, has been vacant ever since, so we'll be able to begin construction soon. I'll let Roland take it away.
Thank you, Graham. Thank you, Board. So an overview of the project, as Graham mentioned, this is a renovation of your existing Learning Center that's been vacated. The interior of the building will be completely demolished out except for some key mechanical and service spaces. The building is roughly 30,000 square, 33,000 square feet, and that's going to be divided up into 12,000 towards the clinic, 4,000 towards the pharmacy, 700 for some counseling spaces, and the remaining area will be for egress circulation and unfinished shell space. For comparison, the existing clinic building is about 4,000 square feet, so you're gaining a lot with this new facility. The clinic area will be, include dedicated sick and well waiting rooms, the appropriate lobotomy or phlobotomy and lab stations, offices and conference rooms for staff, a centralized nurse station with, surrounded by 10 exam rooms and two procedure rooms, several provider offices and a shared staff break room. The pharmacy on the other side, in the pink on your floor plan right now, that area will have its own dedicated waiting area and reception, and that'll include points of sale as well as some more private counseling areas so you can discuss your medication with the pharmacist one-on-one. And then it also includes a 1,500-square-foot Class A pharmacy with a drive-through transaction window, office space, and storage areas. And as I mentioned, the remaining shell space will remain with very minimal finishes, which will allow for flexibility as programs in that area become needed and the need for expansion arises. Moving on to some interior images, this is from the clinic waiting room. So as I mentioned, there's two. Right now, we're in the well side, but then the, on the other side of that glass would be the sick side, so there's still some connection in there, allows for better monitoring from the receptionist, and also helps daylight kind of bleed more into those spaces as well. You can also see here some of our material palette that we're working with, some wood tones, a blue color palette, and then some curved elements. You can see kind of that checkout space up front. From that receptionist area, as you can see, you have full visibility into both of those waiting rooms, so that'll allow people to monitor who's coming in and going out. And then also, you'll have multiple reception stations kind of allowing for that flexibility as needs arise on either side of that dividing wall. Moving through, you come into the nurse station. This is kind of centralized, as I mentioned, by those exam rooms around it, and that curved desk kind of allows for traffic flow to kind of ease around those corners. You can also see that nurse station has a high wall, and that'll provide some privacy for the nurses to make phone calls and do their computer work. You can also see we're bringing some of that wood accent into the ceiling, providing some warmth into that space. And you can also see at the exam rooms, we're kind of highlighting those entrances with a design element and some wayfinding, so it's easier for patients to find their way through this area. Within the exam rooms, we've worked with, with all these spaces, we've worked hand-in-hand with the existing clinic personnel, and we've made sure that these exam rooms are meeting their needs. They're actually increasing in size from what they currently have, and all casework and medical equipment are being coordinated and located appropriately. So this is on the other side. This is in the pharmacy area and its own waiting area. As I mentioned, it's got two transaction areas up front for points of sale, and then around the corner are those kind of recessed, separate counseling areas for a little bit of privacy so you can talk with the pharmacist about your medications. And you can also see, once again, we're bringing those curved elements through the whole time. And the pharmacy proper, you can see that the perimeter is lined by base cabinets. We've also got ample storage for medical prescriptions. We have four working, standing working stations in the center, kind of facing towards the waiting area, allowing for continuous monitoring of those spaces. And we also have the pharmacist's desk in the back and its own office with a window from there kind of looking out so she can keep an eye on what's going in the pharmacy as well. And then on the right side of this image, you can also see the transaction window for that drive-through, and there's a canopy on the outside as well. And then, I think, next, we'll go to the video. The last thing I'd like to touch on is project schedule. We are currently working on construction documents, and those will be issued at the end of June, June 29th, with construction set to begin in September of this year with a completion date in fall of '24. At this time, I'll open up for questions.
Thank you.
It's very spacious. It's comfortable. Sometimes you need that comfort.
As you've seen that in other clinics, it's too cramped. This doesn't seem to be the case here, so I appreciate that.
The areas around the perimeter, can you, do we have any plan for that right now?
The, the areas around the perimeter, can you, do we have any plan for that right now? That you can tell us?
Well, we had had, because we, we had the downside a little bit, and because for future plans, we want to open it up to see what Dr. Phil does, which partnerships we could have at a later time as we expand the services. We're going to leave it flexible, but not have, so we kind of divided it up between, with collaboration with WRA about in phases. Let's get Phase 1 and get it, get us in there, and then as we, as she builds the partnerships and all that, then we develop the rest of the building if need to. No need to cool and maintain a building if it's not really being used, that section, so we kind of try to be strategic about the usage of square footage. Graham, anything else I missed?
The only thing that was mentioned, just possible seasonal service providers that could maybe stop then.
One of the things, you know, we're moving to this self-insured platform on our health insurance that gives us a lot of flexibility. So we've talked in general terms, we might bring some specialists in, we might bring an orthopedic guy in, we might bring a cardiologist in occasionally, you know, for a couple of days a week. This would give them space for that, but that's all in the future, but it gives a lot of flexibility. So.
Looks very good.
Do we have any plans for the existing clinic building, or is that just something we're going to look at later?
Well, that actually belongs to the city.
Oh, yeah?
So the city will, we.
As soon as we leave and, and migrate to the new site, the city will take possession of the building, and then we'll get rid of the porta buildings that we have there. We'll extract those out of that property.
Board, this is an action item.
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Mr. Surt and a second by Ms. Hornsby to approve the schematic drawings for the clinic project. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is an action item to approve the contractor for the clinic project.
Okay, so WRA Architects Construction Services for MISD. We've reviewed the four proposals for the project and evaluated to determine what the best value for the project package was, proposed with proposed fees, general condition, construction services fees, building office staff, and previous experience with the district. The best value was determined to be Lee Lewis Construction, who I have Devin Sherman here representing Lee Lewis tonight, for this single base, single project based on their proposed fees, demonstrated ability, proposed team references, and performance on past projects. WRA Architects and MISD Construction Services recommend the approval of Lee Lewis Construction to be the construction manager at risk for the Mesquite Employee Health Clinic.
Have a motion by Mrs. Hornsby and a second by Mr. Bingham to approve Lee Lewis as a contractor for the clinic project. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Poole. Thank you, Graham. Appreciate you all. Next item is under property is an action item to approve the agreement for the exchange of real property between the Mesquite Independent School District and the City of Mesquite.
Okay, that's me, too. So this is for the location. It vanguard the land swap from the front to the back so that we still have the same acreage as what we did, and this is to approve the, the ability to sign the contracts and
We have a motion by Mr. Rosen, a second by Mr. Carbo, to approve the agreement for the exchange of real property between Mesquite ISD and the City of Mesquite. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Don. Board, is there anything else that we need to discuss? With no other items on the agenda, the time is now 9:07 PM. This meeting is adjourned.